Okay, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, we have a presentation that's going to be made by the Canadian Volunteer Fire Service and Mark Pan from, where is it?
Kentville.
Kentville Fire Department going to present the awards tonight.
It's truly an honor to stand here before you today on behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association to present one of the most prestigious recognitions of our organization, the Lifetime Achievement Award. This year, we are proud to celebrate an exceptional individual whose dedication, service, and leadership have left an indelible mark on the volunteer fire service community. Please join me in congratulating the 2024 recipient Reed Wynott of the Bridgewater Fire Department.
Reed's career in the fire service is nothing short of extraordinary.
With 50 years of service, his unwavering commitment to protecting his community and mentoring the next generation of firefighters embodies the very spirit of volunteerism. Reed has not only responded to countless emergencies, but has also been instrumental in shaping the culture of safety, camaraderie, and excellence within the Bridgewater Fire Department. Throughout his tenure, Reed has demonstrated a passion for sharing his knowledge and expertise. From training new recruits to enhancing operational protocols, he's ensured that the legacy of the Bridgewater Fire Department is one of resilience and readiness. His mentorship has inspired many to follow in his footsteps, fostering a stronger, more connected fire service community. Reed's contributions extend beyond his department. His leadership and advocacy for volunteer fire service have made a lasting impact on our collective mission to safeguard communities across Canada. He exemplifies what it means to serve selflessly, and his dedication reminds us all why we choose this path. We would like to express our sincere gratitude to Makita for their support of this award. As a valued partner, Makita's commitment to recognizing the outstanding contributions of individuals like Reed is a testament to their belief in the power of community and volunteerism. Their sponsorship ensures that we can continue to honor those who have given so much to protect and serve. All the tools on the table are donations from Makita to the recipient's department. Reed, as you accept this Lifetime Achievement Award, know that your impact reaches far beyond the walls of your fire hall. Your leadership, dedication, and compassion have touched countless lives, and your legacy will inspire future generations of volunteer firefighters. This is the first year that we'll be giving a large coin for Reed to keep, and it's got his name engraved on it with the year, as well as now, this is one of only 15 coins like this, a keeper coin or pocket coin that he can have as well. On behalf of the Canadian Volunteer Fire Services Association, the Bridgewater Fire Department, and the many communities you have served, thank you for extraordinary service. Congratulations, Reed, on this well-deserved recognition. Please join me in a round of applause as we celebrate the remarkable achievements of Reed Wynott.
Glad to see everybody's here.
I just, well, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming out to this on our birthday, 125 years. It's something quite special for the town. And I want to thank the Special Stamp Club for this stamp cancellation, right? Is that the pictorial stamp cancellation? I have in my pocket the last one that I keep in my office at Town Hall from 2017, where we had the one for Bitchanewispa Park, which also has the nice stamp on it for the park. So I have a couple of these that are on display, so whenever I'm meeting with developers or business people interested in coming to our town to start a new business, this is one of the things they see. And so to mark our 125th birthday with another, I find these, obviously they're unique, but they're also very special, I think it's very fitting. So thank you all for putting this together and for being here today.
Anyways, thank you, everybody, for coming for Bridgewater 125. And the Philatelic Society has asked us to produce a cancellation commemorating this event, so which we have done, and it's turned out with very positive reviews. And Canada Post is really pleased to be involved with supporting Philatelic Society and Bridgewater. So of course, it's just been a great time. So the council is officially released as of right now, and please take part in some of the festivities. We have coffee, tea, donuts, anything you folks like.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all that from the, yeah?
Yeah.
I would call this special meeting of Bridgewater Town Council to order, and just a reminder that the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it is our privilege to be here. This is a one-topic meeting. It is budget, but there's a whole bunch of things that kind of go with that, so even though it's all-encompassing budget meeting, there's different components to that. And shortly, we will be very privileged to have Marta here, who is the interim GM of the LCLC, and it's her first time coming to our council meeting for that, but she's done an incredible job with the facility, and so we're excited for her presentation in a few minutes. With that, can I have a motion to approve the agenda circulated?
So.
By Counsel Wyatt, seconded by Deputy Mayor. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you. Our first item is 3.1, which is a letter from Lunenburg County United Way requests for the renewal of the Free Bridgewater Transit Pass program. This is something that's been ongoing for a number of years. I don't know if anyone has any comments? Did you want to speak to that?
Yep, just noting that they indicated that as of January 31st of the 10,000 that were provided in the fiscal year that we're currently in, or ends today, there are 5,840 passes, so 85.44% of those passes have been redeemed. So what they do is they return the unused passes at the end of the year, and we have been providing them with the 10,000 free passes, I believe, now for the last two fiscal years, the current year that ends today and the year before that. And prior to that, the request was lower, around 2,000 to 4,000, I believe, but they indicate that the need is there. In terms of the impact to the budget, we use the revenue amounts that we had last year, so it would be accommodated within the budget.
Any questions on that or comments? Counsel Newell?
Just for the sake of transparency, these tickets are given to nonprofit organizations of who then distribute it.
Yes.
We don't touch them once we...
That's right. The United Way, we provide the tickets to the United Way, the passes, and then what they do is they distribute those to nonprofit organizations that they have clients that can use these passes to get around town and do their errands and excess services.
Other comments or questions? Hearing none. Is someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel, if you're...
Yes, I'll make a motion, your worship. I move that the town, that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater agreed to provide a total of 10,000 free passes equal to the total passes in 2024, 2025 to the Lunenburg County United Ways Free Transit Pass program for the fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Thank you. Seconded by Counsel Caldwell. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Now, we're down to 2025, '26 capital and ONM budget, and we will welcome Marta down to talk about the LCLC. And again, Marta is the interim GM that just took over in December.
Correct.
So, you know, it's only been a few short months that she's been on the job. You probably feel like it's been a few years if you've been on the job, but I just will say, and I know that Counsel Wyatt's received the same kind of feedback as well, that the improvements that people are seeing in the facility have made a difference. I know you got some information in the survey as well, but we're getting regular feedback that some of the pain points that we've had over the last few years have been taken care of, which is great, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Hello. All right. So I guess I'm just here to walk you through this year's budget, a very brief PowerPoint presentation. What, sorry, where do I point this?
Just...
At the computer?
Yeah.
All right. So going over this year's revenue, or what we're anticipating for this year, I've compared it from last year's revenue. So we're asking for an increase in our operating grant. We've looked back to over the last several years, and it seems as though you've been writing deficit checks for anywhere between $100,000 to $200,000 each year for operating, so we're asking to increase that budget a little bit this year to hopefully avoid any deficit at the end of the year. Anticipating a little bit in the way of provincial grants for summer student positions and other little things that come in throughout the year for programming. The special events line item is really the 55-plus game, so that's an in and an out. You'll see that go out in the expenditure line as well. And then for some of the revenue from last year versus this year, just being a little bit more realistic and looking at where we actually are at this year with our actuals kind of at the year-end, so that's, those are the numbers that we use to base the revenue off of for the aquatic and the arena and our active living programming and camps. We have seen an increase in our room rentals. They are always busy and booked, so that, which is great for our revenue lines there. Memberships is right, that's right about where we are at this time of year as well. The next two with the library and the Fancy Pants Cafe, those are set contracts for those amounts. Concessions and vending, our revenue is up this year on that. We've also, our expenditures, but we are still, this is based kind of off of where we are at this point in the year. Advertising and sponsorship, yes, it is a big jump, but the naming rates are all up on the facility. So the Aquatic Center, the Arena, and the Library are all up for new naming, so we're hoping to go after some, after that as well. So hopeful, but optimistic with that. And again, the miscellaneous revenue, I was trying to get rid of any miscellaneous categories. I feel like we can put things into actual categories, so those have been distributed back throughout the revenue. And then the outdoor lakes and pools is another service that we provide, so it's a bit of an in and an out. Any questions on revenue?
Questions? Counsel Conklin?
All right. So I got a few questions, Marta. The arena, so the revenue, projected revenue is actually, you're projecting less revenue. Is that because there will be more events that will impact ice time, or?
No, I can't speak to what was done last year, as I didn't create the budget. I think there was some maybe big aspirations or such to get those numbers. This is more, the 360 is more in line with where we actually are with our revenue at the end of the year. My understanding is that is also a big jump from the previous year for what was anticipated for revenue, so let's bring it back down to where we are.
Okay, thanks. So what do we have? Do we have an actual revenue number?
For actuals?
For this, for the current year, yeah.
Year-to-date?
Year-to-date. I don't have, I don't have, like, for March, I have...
We have February's number, though.
We do have February's numbers.
Well, we're still technically in March.
Yeah. Aquatic, or sorry, arena, so just over, about $320,000-ish, so that's still with the rest of February coming in and, and March.
And March.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. March wasn't too bad, I guess, considering we had the Gary Wensel there. Okay, next question. So, yeah, so last year, there was a fee increase on the ice rental. Is that something that the LCLC is considering for next season, or?
We have not put any fee increases in for this season, because all those really didn't roll out until the fall, November, so there, we do not have any anticipated fee increases as of yet.
Okay, thanks. I have a bunch of questions, but if anybody else wants to kind of get in. All, special events, all right. So you have a new marketing and events coordinator?
Mm-hmm.
And I'm guessing with that $185,000 revenue projection, a lot of that's relative to the new position and?
That's relevant to the 55-plus games that we'll be hosting in September.
So that would be, you're anticipating an extra $85,000 in revenue because of the 55-plus?
That is going to be based on grants, registration, sponsorships, that that will also be going out on the other side of the, on the expenditure side?
Yeah.
For the events and, or community, marketing and events, we are looking at the $120,000 for that position to be going after our sponsorship and naming rights of the facility, so that's the increase there to account for that.
Okay, thanks. One thing, looking at the numbers, and I was looking at last year's as well, I didn't really appreciate the revenue figure, figures that the Aquatic Center brings in, like, that really surprised me, like, in a good way. Why are you projecting a decrease in that?
Again, it's looking at to be more in line with where we actually are. Again, last year, I've had some pretty high projections on revenues. That didn't really align with where we actually are.
So are you able to kind of give us a gauge as to where we are now in, what is it, middle of February?
Yeah, so, close to $240,000.
So I will say, one of the big changes we've seen is that some of the bookkeeping now is being done through the Municipal Joint Service Board, and John at the MJSB has really spent a lot of time with Marta cleaning up some of this stuff. So again, getting rid of the miscellaneous stuff, but bringing the revenue more in line and making sure the revenue is in the right column. So that was a big job, where there was revenue not being accounted for, membership revenue, I know, wasn't properly accounted for, and now it is, so that's why that works. So that has cleaned up a lot of this, which has been great. Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
Could you explain to me the outdoor pool and lakes and how that's broken down? Because I know that that's lifeguarding for the LCLC, the outdoor pool and the...
No, that's not ours. So the outdoor pools and lakes is strictly for the town of Bridgewater and MODL, so we provide the staff at the, at your pool, as well as lifeguards and lessons at Musha Mush Beach in the summer. So that is the expenditures, which then also, or the revenue, which will then also go out on the expenditure side of things.
So we get a bill for the pool, and they get a bill for the lakes?
Gotcha.
So just to ease anyone's confusion, we're not commingling, and we're not paying for the lakes, and they're not paying for the pool, so we only get the one. Counsel Conklin, you have more questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Memberships. So I think you've experienced some pretty good growth in the amount of memberships that have been sold over the past, probably, I don't know, 12 to 18 months, but especially, I guess, within the last 12 months. Are you, okay, so it looks like it's just, we're going 245 to 245. So is last year's projection kind of unrealistic?
No, there was the increase in membership fees with last year, which, which I think was why the high projection for memberships. And so in February, I consider our year-to-date actuals were around 235. We do have our memberships all cleaned up, again, with the change in how the accounting was being done. We had some software changes, so there was, it was kind of a lot to sort of clean up and sort through, and so we are pretty confident in our membership numbers now, is where they are. We are fluctuating and leveling out, but we do have a lot, we are seeing a lot of memberships and a lot of people through the facility.
Okay, thanks. On the advertising and sponsorship side, so out of that 120, like, how much of that 120 are you expecting or anticipating from, like, naming rights?
All of it.
All of it, okay. So what about, like, the other sponsorship and advertising within the facility, like the elevator, the scoreboard, the rink board?
Yes, sorry, I shouldn't say all of it. Some of that is built into there as, as well. The arena boards is, the junior B team has the rights to the boards. We can sell them partway through the season, so that's not our sponsorship, but the remaining sponsorship in the facility is ours. Travis is really working hard on sort of getting a handle on that and getting things up to date and contracts renewed and such, and kind of cleaning up some of the older sponsorship that is out there.
So could you kind of clarify on the boards, the junior B, so they get it for part of the year?
Yes. And they have, they have the board rights. So in August, the board, the sponsorship will come off of the boards, and it's part of their agreement.
Good agreement. So the sponsorship rights that, I guess, the naming rights, you're going for, what, a three-year or a five-year?
Or hopefully a 10-year.
Or 10-year.
See what we can get.
Yeah.
Go big.
We can name it the Mike Conken Center if you want to also name the outside, because that wouldn't include naming rights to the building, right?
You know what? If I had the money, no thanks. If I did have the money, I'd put pickleball in just to keep former counselor Wayne Former happy.
Give him the naming rights.
Yeah. Okay. One other, on the concession and vending, are you looking at, like, expanding the vending machine complement, or?
Concession, that really is what's coming through, well, both the machines and the concession, actually during the games that we operate inside the arena. So, yeah, it's, it's been busy.
I'm done for that.
You're done?
Thank you.
Just a comment on room rentals. I guess you said that was very popular. Just wondering, for the room rental rates, are those reviewed and adjusted accordingly?
We are, sorry.
Yeah, knowing that we're competitive, but at the same time affordable and...
We are very affordable. We are putting to get, we are working on a fee schedule right now, and the intent with a fee schedule is to sort of, to get our current rates, review them, and then probably to try to get a multi-year rate increase in there and kind of make those projections where, but in the process, our past last month, been collecting everything and trying to get it all together.
Sure.
So we know increase at this year, but we hope to have, so that we can also then be advertising what they will be, so people will be able to see that in the next, what they will be next year and the following year for all of our fees. So we have it, we're just kind of compiling all the information still.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
Counsel Newell?
Looks like about 55% of revenue comes from the two municipalities, a million dollars each. I think to most people looking at it, they might be like, wow, we're spending a million dollars. And now, that's not to say it's a public service, right? There's a lot of value there. But is there anything that you're able to share of maybe, is there any work being done to maybe help? We'll say increase the other revenues, lower this, you know, maybe...
We, I guess, just, we are, we are working on, for some of the things, I, like, we aren't going after any big events of our own this year, but we are really working on bringing events, so rental events, so that they are not, it's not our risk. So we have circus coming, we have wrestling coming, we are renting our back parking lot for a significant amount this summer. So we're looking at, we've had the mom market in there, so looking at revenue opportunities through that way, that doesn't tax staff. We are, you know, our wages, you will see our wages are high, but we are not a really big crew to be putting on big events and managing that facility as well. So we're looking at creative ways to bring revenue into the building rather than events where we could be a significant loss.
And it seems like your staff is already working pretty hard.
Other questions for Marta? Move along. Counsel Conklin?
While we're on the advertising slash sponsorship, so I'm just curious, the rink, so the panels, like, above ice level and in ice advertising?
It's ours.
Is that going to the junior B team as well?
Those are ours.
Okay, and on the scoreboard, that's yours as well?
That's ours, yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. Keep going.
Okay, expenses. You do see an increase in our wages. We have, there are two minimum wage increases this year, so that is accounted for in there, as well as CPI increase for staff. Any utilities are really expensive. We are a very large facility, so it costs a lot of money to keep the doors open and the lights on and the ice cold and the water warm. We do have a bit of an increase in our IT, and some of the increases and the changes you'll see is that, as I was putting the budget together too, just moving things to make, like, lumping, grouping like with like. So yes, there's an increase in our telecommunications, but that now also includes our radios, whereas before, that was sitting down in facility maintenance. So there's, some of those can be explained by that. Professional fees, that includes everything from our, like we mentioned earlier, the MJSB help with the, with the finances, with the HR. Snow removal is in there. Let's go to my notes before I forget things. I think that's everything. No? I think that's everything. Again, special events is, that's the 55-plus games, the expenditure is coming out of that. Programming supplies, pretty minimal budget for that. Custodial, we have had a large increase in custodial supplies and needs, but we do have a lot of people coming through our building. Like I said, we have 10,000 people a week that we welcome through our doors, which is a significant amount of people, so there's a lot of cleanup to do, or supplies that are needed for that. And no other really big increase, except for the concession and vending, I guess. You can see the increase, that's the increase in the expenditures, offset for the increase in the revenue as well there. And then the outdoor pools and lakes.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor.
The aquatic supply has almost doubled. Is that an increase in the cost of the supplies?
That was moving the chemicals into the aquatic supplies as well, so that was some of those moving parts.
Councilor Conklin?
Okay, custodial. So, did I read somewhere that the Bridgewater outdoor pool will no longer have custodial services supplied by LCLC?
Well, we haven't negotiated the contract yet, but that is the hope.
Boy, I don't know what kind of package I got sent.
I think, yeah, Director of Creative Development, Karabi.
Oh, sorry, yes, that's where I read it, okay.
That is, so I said that we, it hasn't been negotiated in the contract, we're looking at alternatives, because it is a drain on their resources, and there's a high need for the pool, the outdoor pool, to have that cleaned.
Okay.
So, we're negotiating.
Yeah, so, like, I guess if, let's say the LCLC is able to unload some of that responsibility as far as, or cost, on the Regan's Pool on Des Brusay, sorry, on Jubilee, why such a big uptick in expenses then, on the custodial side? Like, is that more or less the same type of line item we're talking, or...
So, your custodial wouldn't have necessarily come through that, that, the custodial for the outdoor pool would have gone through the outdoor line.
I'll just add, we have a separate budget for that, in the outdoor pool, so.
Yeah.
Custodial is mostly increased cost of supplies, and a very much-needed increase in frequency of cleaning, which was, I think, one of the number-one complaints, was it just wasn't being kept up with, so I think that's the, you can't have better service without paying more for...
Yeah.
Yeah.
I apologize, but I do have something on the revenue side, a question I forgot to ask. So, for the library, is there a lease in place?
Yes.
So when does that expire?
We just renewed it.
Yeah.
Okay. At the same rate?
No, it was lower rates to start.
Went down.
Yeah. So council approved that, was it last year, the 20...
No, year before.
2023, December 2023.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was a lower rate, square footage.
Okay. I guess...
Good town negotiators.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Next slide.
Yep.
Oh, sorry, Councilor Conklin?
One more question. Can you explain why maintenance and repairs are down by 30,000?
And that's just moving, some of, that was taking the snow removal out of there, and the logos for the ice were in that category too, so that just came down into the sponsorship and advertising. So that was, again, moving things around, we're kind of grouping more like with like, not actually down in our maintenance.
Sorry, Mayor, one other question. So, the bank fees and charges, so I see a significant drop, which is nice. Just wondering, like, for your banking services, do they participate in a RFP relative to the town or modals for banking services?
That's a question that I can't answer.
Yeah, I mean, you're able to save, like, what, 35% or something off of what you spent the year before, which is significant. I don't know what the heck was going on last year, if you had $20,000 in bank fees.
I think part of that also is, we are only at 10,000 maybe in February, maybe, hopefully not, we didn't miss something there, or if I've moved something. That one, I would have to look at, to why, look further into that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. This is just a pretty picture, to sort of show the, some of the changes. So you can see 2024's budget and up to 2025, and what is the makeup of the biggest changes. So the biggest increase is really, is wages, the special events is the 55-plus games, again, utilities, IT, which is the increased charge from the MJSB, and then the other one just accounts for, you know, increased costs.
Questions?
Oh, sorry. You have questions on my picture? Capital. Not a, not a big ask this year for capital. We are carrying forward several projects that are in progress from this year that we need to finish up. We need a new auto scrubbers, a lot of things we're coming to the end-of-life expectancy. We are 10 to 12 years on this facility, so the auto scrubbers, the floor scrubber, we need a new one of those, which has been, we have two currently that have been patched along, and kind of can't really be patched around anymore. Our ice resurfacer has also kind of come to the end of its life. We did get a grant for 150,000, that is confirmed, so we're really excited about that. IT upgrades, which includes our equipment costs, our firewall replacement, or work that needs to be done, as well as to do a, to hire a contractor or consultant to come in and to do a needs assessment within the facility. I'm sure you're aware of the issues with the number of devices and such, so that is included into that. Our website needs a redesign, it needs some love, so we've put in for that, to be eligible for a grant that will be opening up soon, so we're going to apply on that, and hopefully get some costs, or help bring down our costs for that. Again, as we said, our facility is well-used, well-loved, and needs a little love, so we would like to guess, kind of put out a contract for some drywall and paint repair in our meeting rooms, and in some of the washrooms. The pool UV has been a phased project. This year, we are, pardon me, on the, replacing the UV on the therapy pool, no, play pool this year, last year it was the therapy pool, so that's just been a multi-year project, replacing, upgrading on those. Automation controls, we're really at the end of life on a lot of these systems. So far, they've been being replaced as they break, and this is in anticipation, because many have been breaking for that. And then also snow blower, we do our own snow removal on the outside of the facility, and ours is done. So there is our capital asks for this year. Any questions?
Questions, Councilor Conklin?
EV car chargers. Sorry. So, that was on the capital budget for last year. Where are we with that?
Nowhere. The board passed a motion at the last meeting about kind of getting a company to come in, you could probably speak better to it than I can.
Yeah, so, basically, where we landed was, why should we be paying for those, right? There'll be a company that, I mean, I will say, the original thought was, if we put them in, then there's a revenue component, we would generate the, we would take the revenue from the car chargers. So, to be clear, they weren't going to be free chargers. But if it takes years to get our ducks in a row, because we have all these other things to do, does it not just make sense to have a company come in, and if they want 10 parking spaces at the back of the parking lot, and they're going to pay for the infrastructure, maybe we charge some rent, it's a benefit to the user, no cost to the facility? So, we took it off the books, because it then doesn't become our project. So that's kind of where we landed. Correct if I'm wrong, Councilor Conklin?
Yeah, I'd just add, as an explanation for this year, they were, they were grant-dependent. We didn't get the grant, so that's why it didn't happen this year.
Right, thank you, yeah. So if there was a grant placed, we could have moved that forward, but...
Did we apply for it?
We did.
Yeah, we was applied for?
Yeah. So, it doesn't mean that we don't hope to have EV chargers there, we just, it just means that it's not going to be borne by the budget of the facility.
I'm guessing that there was a roof investigation done last year, and it must have investigated well, because there are no roof maintenance items?
Not as big as, and they originally thought. It is also one of those projects that's ongoing, so that's one of the carryforwards. So we do have, Flynn has been engaged, and has been up and done the investigation, Flynn Contracting, and has been doing some patching and repairing, but we have not finished that project, so that's still carrying forward.
All right.
Our deputy CAO can also answer any roof-related questions if you want more detail.
Yeah, we'll talk roofs later. Room rentals, backing up on the revenue side, what, besides the meeting rooms, where else are you driving revenue for room rentals? Would it be storage? Is there any, no?
No, we don't charge for storage. It's the, it's the multipurpose room, the meeting room, the dryland training room downstairs, and it's a little bit on the active living, but we really fill it with our program, and the party room. But our rooms are rented pretty much all day, every day, like, they are really busy.
Yeah, okay.
Hence the need to give them a little bit of love.
Yeah. Righto, thank you, Deputy Mayor Conklin.
You said we don't charge for storage. Is there a lot of storage on site?
Ish. Arena-ish type thing, yeah.
Okay, next slide.
Is that it? Oh, no, sorry. And then, oh, just what our asks are from the municipalities this year. So the operating of 958,750, as well as the capital contributions, your debenture, so there's our total ask is there.
So that debenture interest is part of the special purpose tax, which I know someone is going to ask the next item, when the date is, because for some reason, we should be just sticking it to these monitors, because we ask the question like five times a year? I think it ends in 2028, and our last payment is 2027, because there'll be enough money to make the 2028.
We may have to go beyond 2028.
You're going to, it's okay, you'll speak to it.
I normally have it written down, but no one asked me until now.
We'll get to it. We'll get to it later, but that's what that is. Other questions for Mart? Councilor Newell?
Yeah, the 15,000 for the website redesign, that just seems high to me. Is there anything in particular that seems to be driving that, or is that just a number that, like, I guess, part A of that question is, is there something complex with the website? Like, is it the connect to rec stuff, or is it, is that just a number? We're still figuring it out.
No, we did go out to get initial, like, ballpark figure for what it would cost, and that is what we got, in that ballpark.
And a grant for half of it, I think.
We hope, we hope to get a grant, sorry, the grant on that one is not confirmed, the application doesn't open until in the next couple weeks, so, but we are eligible.
Other questions?
Just curious, is that under, like, the digital adoption grant?
It's through CCTH. I would have to go into my emails to see exactly what grant it is, but it's for websites.
Yeah.
And CCTH seems to like us, so hopefully we'll be successful.
Councilor Newell?
Just advertising and promotion expense, we're seeing that jump from last year by 15,000. What all activities are falling in under that? Like, what kind of advertisement?
We are hoping that we get some new naming sponsors, and then that is to cover the cost of having to rebrand, both, because right now, we have the BMO and the Clearwater Seafoods and such are on the, on the glass.
So that jump in expenses is because of the rebranding?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So theoretically, it would go down if they just, if they come back in, and mind you, they might have logo changes, but, I'm telling you, that Mike Conklin Aquatic Center.
He wants the Mike Conklin pickleball court.
I think I should probably learn how to do at least two laps in the pool first.
Yeah, I know, something lessons.
You have a question?
For the Zamboni or the ice resurfacer, advertising on that, is that coming up as well?
Well, yes, because we have a new machine.
Yeah.
So, yeah, if that's part of that extra, like, we have 150, we put in 200, we have 150 grant, 150,000 in grant funding, so part of that expense is anticipated, anticipation of branding it, or putting a logo on it.
And we're, I guess you're confident that, like, when you're going to market, like, the ask for sponsorship and advertising naming rights is, is like, par with what's out there? Like, we're not going to be going low, we're going for good, solid contributions, and...
Yeah, we looked at, we based it off of what was previously, the previous contracts, and increased it a little bit for, you know, inflation.
Just a question about utilities, where it is one of the larger expenses, and if I don't recall, where I don't sit on the board, but they had some upgrades with ice equipment not too long ago, and other, looking at retrofits and different things. I'm just wondering, have there been improvements made that help with the efficiency with, say, the overall utility bill? Like, I know utilities have been increasing, and I'm sure the board is mindful of that being one of the larger expenses, but I'm just curious if there's any planned with trying to be sustainable with our energy use.
We did, the board also did just pass a motion to go with renewal, or to enter, try to enter to a contract with renewal, like, I believe, the town of Bridgewater has done that, renewal energy, to help curb our future energy on consumption costs. It is expensive, it's a very large facility, we do think, so the heat that comes out, that's generated through the ice-making process, does offset our heating, so preheats our hot, our domestic hot water, and our, some of our pools, but it is, it's a huge draw, like, those are some, I'm not sure, you could come on the tour next time we do one, but you can go in there to mechanical room and see the operations, but, yeah.
I think our stats are that 50% of the electrical consumption of the town is through the LCLC.
Wow.
Like, that's, that's huge.
Wow.
Huge.
And we, you know, you operate the building 24 hours a day, right? Like, just because there's nobody in it, you still have to keep your ice cold.
Yep.
We did, we did get a significant grant a few years ago, and do some energy efficiency upgrades, but we also then added a de-humidification unit in the arena, because there were other problems in the arena, and that ate up more than what we saved. Now, if we hadn't done the retrofits, then we would be paying a significantly higher amount of money, but it, we were going down this road, thinking, oh, these energy retrofits, they're going to save the, save us on the electrical bill, and then it was great, and then until we added this giant piece of equipment, which was needed, so. But the renewal, having discussions with renewal, will hopefully stabilize things, at least for that. Councilor Conklin?
Going back to special events revenue, let's say we take out the 55-plus games, then we'd be looking at, like, maybe another year of approximately, what, 100,000?
No, we haven't put this, I've, like I said, we are doing our event revenues more through rentals, so that's also part of the, I'm sorry, I missed that one, my explanation's part of the increase in our rental revenue. So, renting the arena floor for those, or renting out the arena space for those events, and that's being captured in our rent, in the revenue for either the arena and the room rentals and things like that, so that revenue is showing through there. The special events revenue for this year, pardon me, really is the 55-plus games coming in and out.
Okay. Another question, and it's probably for Mayor or Tammy. So where would our revenue from the marketing levy fit in here? Because...
Good question.
Ideally, it could be directed towards some special events at the LCLC, right?
Yeah, so the intention, when discussions initially started about a levy, was for events, to seed events.
Yeah.
So in that case, each municipal unit would be asked to provide funding to seed an event, or at that time, we had Events Lunenburg, I believe it was called, that was created that would determine what events should be funded, and the municipal units would use the levy funds to help seed those.
So a great example would be, we had $10,000 in last year's budget, and $10,000 in this year's budget for the 55-plus games as a town. If the marketing levy had been in place last year, then we would have, most likely, used that money, and not taken it from the taxpayer.
Yeah.
So, your questions, great question to ask for this. Yeah, so that, that would be money we would use for special events, whether it's 55-plus games or something else that's brought in.
I should say, like, we're not, we don't want to stop special events and try to bring events in right now, we just need to press pause.
Yeah.
And like, like, we are playing a lot of catch-up at the moment. There is, you know, there's, the concert for last summer did not generate as much revenue as had hoped, it was a lot of work for staff, there was a loss there, so we're looking at other ways to bring in revenue that's a little more passive revenue for this year. And, you know, going forward with, once the board does some strategic planning, you have a permanent GM in place. You can open that conversation again, but just for this year, we're trying to, you know, level things out a little bit.
Yeah, it seems to be we're always trying to level things out. A lot of turnover there, so hats off to you for the job that you've done and the position that you've inherited. Thank you. That's, I think I'm out of questions.
Are there any other questions for Marta while we have her here? Not seeing any. Thank you for coming and presenting, and, yeah, again, great job, so.
Thank you. Thank you for the support. Appreciate it.
Okay, so we do, Tammy, you want, we want to deal with this one separately from the other, right? There's a motion, if someone wants to put a motion on the floor, deal with the LCLC. Councilor Colwell?
I move the Town Council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the proposed two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six LCLC capital and operating budget, with the Town of Bridgewater's portion being nine hundred fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars for operating and one hundred and three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for capital, or total contribution by the Town of Bridgewater of one million sixty-two thousand as presented in document twenty-five dash zero six one.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Why Not. Further discussion?
Okay, so a question. So, I guess, where are we going to get this money from?
To fund the budget?
Yeah, because we were kind of thinking that if it was what we've been doing the last few years, it would be X amount of dollars. Now we're up another, what, three hundred?
Two hundred and thirty-eight, or, yeah.
Two thirty?
So seven twenty-five last year, and, yeah.
So we have it in this, we have it in this budget for tonight. We, this was anticipated.
Yeah. So, I guess.
Is that what you mean? Like, it's not, like, the budget that's been presented by our staff to council does already accounts for this?
Yeah.
Okay. That's the revised?
Yes, yep, yep. So that was circulated on Friday, and that had those revised numbers.
We had budgeted for a two hundred thousand dollar increase, because we were kind of in early discussions, I guess. So we were predicting that might come our way.
Yeah.
And we had actually overbudgeted for capital, so we had some savings compared to the capital that was presented. So it was pretty well covered in the, in the budget already.
Other comments or questions? I'll just say, I said this at the last meeting too, when it comes to this facility, when we do, I think I said it when Samir was here, we do a physician recruitment tour. The LCLC is our longest stop, for good reason. They always have lots of questions they want to see. It's never empty either. It doesn't matter what time of day or night we go with a doctor or a nurse practitioner. There's always someone on the ice, people in the pool, and the library is usually packed. And so I will just say, like, yes, this facility costs a lot of money, but it also is a tool that helps us attract doctors, which does not have a revenue component in the LCLC's budget. But if you were to put a price, a value on just adding a couple of doctors a year, which we have done more than that, what's that worth to somebody? If it's worth a million dollars to have a doctor in the community, and I would argue it's worth more than a million dollars to have a doctor in the community, you know, is this facility really that expensive in the grand thing, scheme of things? So, I mean, it is expensive, but it is a tool. And, yeah, I'm just trying to think, the last three visits that we had for doctor recruitment, two of them, that was the thing that just stuck with them, that and the trails. But it was looking for hockey for their child and looking for swimming and swimming lessons. And one of those was for the physician. And they wanted, they saw adults in the pool, so it was, that's what they wanted, so. Anyways, wanted to say that. Any further questions?
I'm willing to, may I add a comment? I think it's like, I wanted to build in a comment, and when people say that, oh, municipalities don't have a role to play in healthcare. Like, this is a great example of, like, no, maybe we don't directly hire the doctors, but it's, there are things we do to make a great place to live that people want to come here. And I think that's true with, whether it's EV infrastructure or, or housing, whatever that might be. Like, we play a role, and this is a great example. I mean, when we were looking through the budget survey, I'm not sure if we're going to get a full presentation on that or not, but reading through the comments, like, there are people that are like, like, there is more demand for the LCL. There are people who want to do that, and there's a clear impact to our community, enough that people are writing feedback and saying, this is what I'm missing, to the point that I still want to take swimming lessons there, and it's always full, so we should work on that. But, you know, I think it's just a testament to, like, the impact that it has, that people write in and tell us about it.
So we have a mover and seconder, ready for the question?
Question?
All of those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. Thank you. And we will move on to budget.
So with your agenda tonight, you have a revised PowerPoint presentation, which will go over the beginning parts of. You have a revised operating and capital budget. And those two documents reflect some of the changes that have occurred since our last meeting with council. They're highlighted in the document. One of the changes, we just, we just received a presentation on tonight, which was a change in the funding amounts for the LCLC. But there have been a few other, other changes that have been made, and Kim will highlight those. In addition to that, you have a report for information on, on some data or some numbers that were requested with respects to the outdoor pool as it, how, as it pertains to free public swims and user numbers, as well as the cost for the LCLC contract for the provision of lifeguards, some information on the Pro Kids program, and parking permits, as was requested as well. So that's there, and we can certainly go over that. And lastly, you have the summary of the budget survey that provides you with the input that was received using our online survey that Patrick had developed, and those are there as background information for you as well. So the two documents that we're going to focus on for the moment right now are the presentation as well as your budget document. So you have your budget document, which contains more of the detail of each department. It shows you your baseline, which is your status quo or your core delivery services. The additions that would be new this year that are being proposed, either one-time or reoccurring. Reoccurring means you'll see it in the budget in the subsequent year. One-time means it's in for this year and then out. And then we show deletions, and deletions could be a reduction in cost, but it's primarily taking out those additions from the year before that were one-time and not reoccurring. And then you have your adjusted baseline or your, your total budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year. So that's how the document is developed. So this year, the operating budget as revised is thirty-three million nine hundred seventy-seven thousand thirty-three dollars. And the capital budget, which has had a few changes to it as well, is sixteen point nine million. And Kim will go over what those changes are. But an example of one was last week when we approved the digester building repairs for the membrane and five hundred fifty thousand. That will, that will show up in this year's budget in twenty-five, twenty-six with the funding from reserve to also accompany that as well. So there's been some changes in those numbers. The tax rates are proposed to remain the same as last year at a dollar eighty-five for residential, four dollars and seven cents for commercial. And the LCLC special purpose tax remains at six cents. And we will, with that rate remaining there, be, have generated enough revenue to pay the debt owing in twenty-twenty-seven, but we have a term on our payments that extend beyond that. So we'll have money in the bank to make those payments. And it is the end of twenty-twenty-seven?
The last year that we have to make a payment is fiscal year twenty-nine thirty. So that's the debenture repayment schedule. We can't early pay it. So we'll have the money in savings to offset those payments in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. I typically don't say much more than that, but I anticipate we'd be at three cents. Maybe, maybe we can get that lower, because we'll, because the assessment's gone up recently. We're accumulating that money faster than anticipated. So for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we will still have a special purpose tax, but it likely won't need to be the full six cents even in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So we really just have twenty-five, twenty-six at full rate, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and then twenty-seven, twenty-eight would be a partial rate, I predict.
Okay, yep.
Based on assessment.
The wastewater rates are proposed to increase fifteen percent. So that's not fifteen percent across each, each individual classification, but overall, the revenue is increasing by fifteen percent. Any surplus that's generated from the wastewater rate goes to reserve to help fund our capital program. And as council is aware, we have a rather aggressive capital program in the wastewater category. So the reserves are necessary to fund that. So the rates that are, the adjustments are shown on the screen for the various classifications. The rate is intended to cover the operating cost almost fully. There's still some things that aren't in there, such as, say, my time or, or the director of finance time, but there is, it's moving there. And it's intended to cover capital and our debt servicing cost. And through this budget, your strategic priorities are implemented as well. So through community prosperity, we have extensive investment in infrastructure that's required to support both growth and development. So you're seeing the budget that there's eleven point seven million. That's been adjusted to account for a few changes in the capital, which Kim will go over. But wastewater is eleven point seven million dollars this year in funding. Road upgrades are two point eight, four or five million. And that includes Empire Street and St. Philip's Street road upgrades as part of sewer and water work and pavement management work as well throughout the town. Sidewalks, there's a hundred and sixty thousand. Park development at three hundred sixty-eight thousand. And wastewater capacity strategy being developed, and that has a hundred and ninety thousand dollars attached to that. Business park development, so we have some funds in our operating budget that will see land sales marketing strategy and conceptual plans developed. And then in our capital budget, we have funding for business park infrastructure. So this has increased. It was two hundred and fifty for the installation of power poles. And since then, we have made some adjustments to add in some costs associated with developing the land, which includes environmental impact assessments, phase one on the lands that we're about to sell, so that buyers have that information, as well as water course delineation and costs, costs like that, just to get the land ready to, to put to market. We have energized Bridgewater at one point four one million, which is funded through the Smart Cities Grant. Downtown development plan, investment, traction, and tourism strategy, and a housing action plan that will be implemented. And there is eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in the budget for that. And that is funded through a Housing Accelerator Fund grant that we received. In terms of community well-being, there's a continued investment in recreation facilities, so we just approved the LCLC budget, but we do invest in that. That's a significant investment in rec facilities. Parks, playgrounds, and outdoor pools. So in total, it's two point three seven four million dollars that the town invests in, in recreation facilities. The accessibility action plan will be, it's just been approved, and we'll see that implemented this year. It's a multi-year plan. The housing action plan, which will look at how we incentivize both attainable and affordable housing for the town to help grow our community and provide that foundation to attract growth in our, in the town. Public transit, there's continued investment in that. We have seventeen thousand in the budget for stop improvements and shelters. And we plan to continue with the extension of ours, which was funded through a grant, and look at work being done this year on how to expand transit throughout the town and how to collaborate with our neighboring municipal unit to see if there's possibilities for expansion there. So our net cost for transit, once we, once we netted the revenue, is two hundred forty-eight thousand. Anti-racism, inclusion, and diversity work will also be done this year, and we'll have funds in the budget, forty thousand, for both our share of the cost of the coordinator, as well as our share of the cost of implementing the initiatives within the regional plan. The community, community well-being museum, we have an operating grant there, which is really the town's, it's, it's the portion of that service that doesn't have an offsetting revenue, so it's funded through our tax rate of a hundred ninety-five thousand, and that is lower than last year's contribution. Community events, we have a hundred and six thousand budgeted for community events with Canada Day, Christmas on La Haye, Harvest Moon Festival, and Music on the Riverbank. So that's to act, to help activate our downtown and, and keep it vibrant. We support nonprofit organizations through this budget, so there's two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars proposed in this year's budget. So grants remain at forty-five thousand, sponsorships at fifty thousand, and we provide property tax exemptions of a hundred and twenty-three thousand to nonprofit organizations. There's seventy thousand dollars in the budget to support low-income property tax owners, and that's through a property tax exemption. And Pro Kids and Pro Fund, there's twenty-five thousand dollars in the budget that will see the Pro Kids program continue, as well as look at a Pro Fund, which is for how to remove financial barriers for adults to participate in activities and programs as well. Continuing on the community well-being, we invest in emergency response services, so fire services, one point eight million. And there is a fire services review proposed there for fifty thousand. And police protection is four point six million. That's net. So that's after we take out the revenue. And then emergency support, response funding of REMO of forty-nine thousand dollars. So that's the Regional Emergency Management Organization. And this year, we'll see year two of the Hemlock-Woolley Adelgett Project at a hundred and fifty-eight thousand. And that also includes within that contracting to the District of Lunenburg for our services to start the program within, within their municipality. And that's at no, no cost to the town taxpayer to do that. In terms of ensuring fiscal responsibility, this year, there's proposed in the budget one point one three five million dollars to go to the wastewater reserve to help fund our wastewater projects. Sourcing of grants, there's four point six six million in capital grants in our budget this year to help offset capital projects. And there's one point zero three million in operating grants. And that's excluding transfers and police funding. So those are, those are grants that have been sourced to help offset the cost of delivering services. Asset management, plan and program, we'll see the acquisition of software this year in the latter part of the fiscal year. And the plan is in, in the process of being developed, which will be brought forward to council to show the three-year roadmap. The long-range budget tool and software investment will be made this year to look at. We do capital planning on a ten-year basis. This will enable Kim and her team to present to council long-range operating plans as well. And development and infrastructure charges work will hopefully be complete this year, and there's a cost of a hundred and fifty thousand to do that. And we'll be using the Housing Accelerator Fund money to help offset that cost. And we'll continue to ensure debt affordability. And part of the way to do that is to fund more of our operating through other sources than debt. And so this year, we will fund two point two million, it's proposed to fund two point two million of the capital fund using operating revenue. In terms of organizational excellence, we will, this year, propose to start the process of establishing a wastewater utility. And that's to look at having wastewater regulated in the same way that water is, where it's regulated by the Nova Scotia Utility Review Board. It's funded fully, including depreciation, which will ensure that there are reserves built up in the future to fund capital investments required. The operations review is proposed this year, so that's a hundred thousand dollars to take a look at our operations with, with the town and look at the services we provide, how we provide them the resources required to do that, to determine if there's any operational efficiencies that can be realized. And this will be done by bringing in an outside party to do the work to provide council with assurances or that, remove any perceived perception of bias that may be present. And then we'd be looking at the establishment of an equity, diversity, and inclusion plan this year. Again, asset management, long-range budgeting, and the data governance. Again, asset management, long-range budgeting, and the data governance, privacy management framework and program continues this year. And this year is the last year that it would be funded through the Smart Cities Grant Program. So we had agreed to create that position with the overall objective, perhaps, of becoming a regional service at some point. So I'll hand it over to Kim to kind of go over the budget. At a high level, as well as identify for you some of the changes to the operating and capital budget since you last seen the budget.
All right. So again, just many of the things we went over at the last budget meeting, but there have been a few changes, which I will take you through the detail of those, so we may hit some of these slides pretty briefly because they're repetitive. So again, we have, the budget is balanced, so there's no surplus or deficit, which is a requirement of the MGA, with gross expenditures being 33.9 million and the same amount in revenue. And there's just a little breakdown on the slide between tax revenue and non-tax revenue. So 28.6 million of the revenue comes from taxes alone. Again, just kind of a breakdown of that split between the various different components of the budget. So you can see that police are at 77.8%. Wastewater is 12.25% of the budget, and so on. Some of the smaller slices of the pie here are some of those smaller budgets, like museums, cemetery, and so on. And this was, it's been updated since the last time you saw it, but just from the changes that were made to the budget. Again, just a little bit more of a visual on tax revenue versus other revenues. Taxation is our primary source of revenue for the town. Again, mandatory contributions, these are things that we must pay for that are based primarily on uniform assessment, and the major one of those being education. So because assessment increased, or our uniform assessment has increased, our education contribution increased by 231,561. There's another small change because we actually received a letter from PVSC with their budget as opposed to the last time where we had estimated. So there's a slight increase to that, being about 4,000 over last year. So the last time you saw the slide, it was just a tiny bit smaller. This slide is from last time, so we were talking about the significant baseline changes. We go through a lot later in the presentation about all those additions and deletions, but there are some things that the baseline changed as well. And so these were just the highlights of those big things, primarily education contribution. We were expecting a reduction in the police fees for service that I believe the police chief spoke to when he was here last time. We have an increase for garbage contracts because there was a contractual 8.8% increase over last year. We had a large savings on insurance because we went to RFP, and that savings is expected to be about $214,000. The new insurance contract is effective tomorrow, April 1st. And that, I know there was questions last time, and so that insurance cost is not one line. Our insurance costs are spread entirely throughout that budget, so you won't see one line where the baseline is down 214,000. I think we noticed the last time, a lot of that shows up in parks. It was one area that it shows up, but it impacts any department that has vehicles and buildings and so forth. So we spread that savings between the different departments. Again, just an estimate based on the RFP. When we get the detailed invoice, we'll be able to know a little more for budgeting next year. We had a change in MJSB budget, so there's an increased waste site expenditures by about $33,000 based on increase in tipping fees. I didn't update this slide completely, so the LCLC operating budget is actually about $233,000 increase. This was based on the last version of the budget that we had. Other significant things, regional building inspection, or building and fire inspection and regional inspection services. So then, those two lines, I wanted to point out because one's a significant increase and one's a decrease. There's an agreement with Modal for those inspection services, but also included in that is a one-time fee to digitize our records. And so that'll be a deletion next year. We've just been budgeting for it and waiting for the agreement to be in place, and so 25, 26 is the only year we should incur that expense, and then we'll see that come back out. MJSB, we had an increase in HR and IT. The safety officer, this is their first full year, so we'll see an increase in that budget just because last year was for a partial year. You also know that we approved a new salary administration, which resulted in new step changes for staff. And then we had increases for QB, non-union, and police staff, just based on CPI or contracts. Again, just to give you an idea, the baseline started at 32.3 million. We had 2.8 million of additions and 1.2 million of deletions to get to our final budget of 33.9 million. So we just have a couple of slides to talk to you about the changes since the last time you saw the budget. So what often happens is I get a random email. After we've prepared the budget document, where people say, hey, this came to light, this came to light, this came to light. So since the last time you've seen it, this is the result of those emails. So the police were notified that one of their seconded positions would no longer be funded, so we have a reduction in revenue and a reduction in salaries offsetting that. So you'll see we've got a reduction in revenue and some savings, so there's a net cost to the police budget of about $10,000 of net lost revenue. In addition, when, the last time we had the police incorporated into the town budget, they hadn't included an operations review. That came up at their budget meeting at the commission, so that's now included in the town's budget as well. Salary admin implementation, this is on this list, but it's controversial. The CAO and I had to have a conversation to explain this to her. So Tammy had included inner contingency as an addition because it was an estimate at the time. Once we knew what CPI was and what everyone's adjustment was going to be, we took the actual and put it through the entirety of the budget. So it is an adjustment, but only because every department's budget changed. But we, on the other side of that, we reduced the contingency account. The main reason for that, really, is that when we give you a quarterly report, the actual salary costs would look really out of whack with the budget if we didn't actually update the budget once we knew CPI and those step changes for all the staff. So you'll see that the salary admin kind of increased the budget, but it reduced the admin budget. And then we had $55,000 of savings from the CPI. We have budgeted 2.5, and the actual came in at 2.1. In addition, as you're aware, the LCLC operating budget, we had originally put 200,000 in, and it's actually, as an increase, and it actually came in at 233,750 over last year's budget. So the resulting being 230, or, sorry, the 958,750 for LCLC operating. However, we, our first information we'd received, you know, when we started the budget process in the fall, was that the capital budget would be significant. That was adjusted, so we've actually, compared to the last version of the budget you saw, we actually reduced their capital by 146,750 of what we were anticipating our 50% funding to be. So the overall LCLC budget is less than we had planned for between those two categories. And then just two small ones, the REMO budget changed by $388, and the PVSC changed by $3,043. And so that $31,000, basically, was existed in the contingency, so it just adjusted that contingency account for that, just so we still have a balanced budget without having to go through various budgets to do that. In addition to the operating, again, things happen around here quickly, and Kim gets emails. So the business park servicing is just a small adjustment. It was to the carry-forward budget, so we had $6 million and change in the business park development costs, but we actually separated out 180,000 of that, so it was in a separate account. And really, to acknowledge the fact that there's two different departments that needed that budget, it's much simpler to separate out the actual land sales costs. Once we had the detailed presentation during the, is it coming up?
It's coming up.
Yes. So staff saw a presentation early that we realized we should probably allocate those funds a bit differently. So no increased cost, no increased funding for that, just a reallocation of budget. In addition to that, for fiscal '25, '26 capital, pump station three, we had some cost provisions, so that estimate increased by 273,000, and we're funding that with the undesignated reserve. And as we talked about at a previous, at the last council meeting, the digester building repairs, 550,000 was approved by council and to be funded by the wastewater reserve. We have had a little bit of good news on that, and we may, we've submitted an insurance claim. We're not sure if we'll get approved or not, but we actually might not need the reserve funds for that, and we should know more in another month or so. But it was worth a try, to try and get that covered. So staff are not just accepting that, we're still trying to get some money back. So those are the big operating and capital changes. Doesn't affect the debt service ratio, it didn't affect balancing of the budget.
Any questions on those changes? Staff have worked hard to get in there? No?
So again, the additions, deletions, it's not, our intent to re-go through those. I'll just identify that, you know, we did highlight in green for you the additions and deletions that changed from the last version. I'll just find one, maybe, oh, there's one. So there's an example of the police. You'll see the professional services fees, the $10,000 in the addition is for the organizational review. So we did highlight anything that affected additions, deletions for you that changed Sorry, there's lots of pages there. So again, the operating reserve budget, the beginning balance at the, as of March 31st, 2025, so today, is estimated to be 21.4 million. And there's various funds that are designated for projects, specifically 12A and wastewater projects and so on. So the anticipated ending balance at March 31st, 2026 is 13.6 million. I think this, there's another slide here somewhere. Essentially, 13.6 million is still not a bad number. We just happen to be at 21.4 because we're holding money to pay for some projects that just haven't been completed that might be in the carry-forward capital project list. So while it seems a little drastic to go from 21 million to 13.6, it really is just the fact that we were artificially high while we're waiting for some capital projects to be completed and funded. The capital reserve, we're estimating to be at 29, or 2.9 million, sorry. Again, we keep that reserve a little lower just because there's more restrictions on the use of it. So if things are in the operating reserve, there's more flexibility to use those funds for operating items versus the capital reserve. Per the MGA, only allows you to use it for capital or debt repayment, for the most Again, here is the 10-year capital plan, so a couple of highlighted numbers, green just because they changed since the last time you saw them. So the carry-forward is still the same, and the '25, '26 is at 16.9 million for those few changes, being the digester building and pump station three. Debt service, nothing has changed here since the last time, so you can see that the year 30, 31 and the years 29, 30 are kind of our highest at 20, just over 24%. Again, we've talked about before, the assumptions that go in this is that the year the project's in the budget, the following year, we borrow the debt. We all know that some of our projects are multi-year, and so this is based on the worst-case scenario that we borrow immediately the year after we start a project, which is not likely to come and be actual, but to try and project that out for every capital project would be chasing your tail. We use a debt affordability model that was provided by Municipal Finance Corporation, which is kind of rigid. It just gives us the ability to model things out. And so it's the best model that we have right now, and it just gives council an idea of where we're headed.
And it makes no assumptions for grants beyond what we know for sure we're going to get.
Yes, exactly, as does our capital budget. So the capital budget is primarily just things that are confirmed. If it's in there not confirmed, it's because we're only doing the project if the grant comes to fruition. So we may be aware there are grants, we may have applied for grants that are in the budget, but if we don't get the grant, we wouldn't proceed, or we would only use the portion of the budget that wasn't going to be funded with a grant. So we are, we are obviously conservative on that, and we, so usually, grants you can only apply year by year. So those will be implemented in future years if we have them. Again, just a projection of our debt service costs, so we get to the $8 million a year in debt servicing, which would be principal and interest payments. This includes wastewater, as well as other projects. Again, we're at 16.9 million for the '25, '26 capital budget year, and these are our sources of funding. So as Tammy mentioned earlier, we're using 2.2 million of capital from operating. We're projecting to use 1.5 of gas tax reserve. And the reason that's so high is not because we're getting extra grants this year, it's because we've accumulated a balance in gas tax that we haven't used because projects have gotten other funding, might have been rearranged or whatnot, so we have a little bit of a balance there we're trying to use up. So that's higher than normal. It's normally around $725,000 a year that we are receiving. 4.6 million of grants, 6.6 million of debt, and 1.8 from reserves to fund our 16.9. The slide I was looking for. Just to give you an idea, that, you know, really, when we're looking at the reserve, even though we're getting down to that, about 14 million mark in operating reserves, we're still at 45.8% of our general operating expenses, and our policy, the town's policy on that is not less than 20. So we're still significantly over our own policy. The capital reserve, however, sets a minimum level target of 10, at least 10%, and we're at about 8.5 at the end of '25, '26. So slightly under, but we, we could simply just reallocate some operating reserve there, knowing that we could do that to balance that and meet policy, but it's not critical to do that. Again, we talked about the wastewater rate, so the budget includes an overall 15% increase in wastewater revenue. Some categories are higher than 15, some categories are lower than 15% to achieve that overall 15% increase. That includes a $1.1 million transfer to the wastewater reserve from that fund. These are the specific rates and the breakdown. So residential wastewater rate for a single-unit dwelling would be increasing from $519 to $565, only a 9% increase. But as you know, we've targeted getting those additional unit rate up, and to get that up to the single-unit residential rate of 565, that one will be going up by 21%. And then the various other categories. So that's everything in the presentation. Lots of it, again, was kind of repetition, but we did have a number of numbers changed since the last time.
Hey. Questions for staff? We have a number of senior managers here as well. Any questions on numbers you've seen in the budget or comments on the budget? Councilor Conklin?
The special tax.
Yes.
So originally, what was, what were we projecting for a timeline on that to be paid?
So the last year, we would have been collecting the six cents would have been fiscal year 29, 30. And that's the last year principal and interest payments would have been due.
Yeah. Yeah, okay.
Or are due.
So I guess with the increase in assessments, that six cents has given us an additional, like, has basically shortened one year off of the...
28, 29, and 29-30 are completely gone.
Yeah.
And I anticipate 27, 28 will be at a portion of the six cents. Depends on where assessment, once we know assessment for 26, 27, I'll be able to tell you, like, at this time next year, we'll know pretty precisely how much that 27, 28 amount will need to be, because we'll, we'll know the revenue figure for 26, 27. So at this time next year, we'll be able to know with relative certainty what that last year of rate needs to be.
Okay, so...
It'll be less than, I anticipate three cents or less at this point in time, in that 27, 28 year.
Yeah, okay, so I guess going forward, for next year, could we consider reducing that six cents? To keep the same amortization, or whatever length of the original...
It'll, it'll change it slightly, just because the higher the balance in that reserve, the more interest we're earning on it, so...
Won't be much next year, though.
Yeah, I mean, the, that ball, that reserve will have about a million dollars in it to make the final years of payments, so it, it is accumulating a fair amount of interest in the next couple of years as that balance builds up, but that'll be up to council, whether they would essentially like to get it over with, or spread it out a little bit, I guess. I don't know what, I'd have to look at the policy too, for the special purpose tax. I don't know if it was set in policy, or just a motion of council.
Well, yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to check that.
Have to do a little bit of digging on that.
We've changed before, we reduced it.
Counselor Conklin to know for sure.
We reduced it once, but there, there is like a sunset, like, I thought it couldn't go past a certain time, so...
Probably the, the term of the loan.
The term of the, yeah.
Yes.
We can change the rate, but as long as we don't exceed the 29-30 year.
Yeah.
It does have to have a...
So that it removes once the payments are done.
And that, does that apply to our commercial properties as well?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, you had a question?
No.
Okay.
I found my answer myself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo Counselor Conklin's comments, because I know a lot of people have commented on tax rate, and that's one of, kind of, the pressing issue. So if there's a way, you know, if we're doing status quo, if we can look at ways that maybe opportunities to reduce the multipurpose tax, special purpose tax, I'd be in favor of looking at that.
Do you mean for this year, like, this budget? Or next year?
For next year, yeah.
Okay. I think it's a good exercise to go through, to, to do the math on if you reduce it...
Yeah.
But you add a year, more, another year of collection, have you actually reduced it? Do you know what I mean? Like, you may, you may end up...
Yeah, is it beneficial?
It's this tax bill less, but it's one more year of tax bill, but it's a good, it's a good exercise to go through.
Sure, and probably a good topic. We get the assessment roll right around Christmas time.
Yeah.
So in early January of 2026, we would have more information on what's going to be generated in '26, '27.
I see the CAO's making notes.
And what might be left for the following year, and how council would like to, to fund those.
Okay, so we will make sure that, like I said, the CAO's making notes, so we will make sure as we get around that time, and the Director of Finance can give us information and walk us through that. Other questions on items in the budget? I know we've had a number of meetings, but now's your chance to ask questions. I'm going to dive into a couple of parts from the budget survey, but I just want to make sure while we have the Director of Finance here, to ask their questions. Because I'm going to talk for a minute. Okay. So, you know, first of all, thanks to everyone who answered the questions, did the survey, came out to talk Bridgewater sessions, and did those with us. So some of the questions can be answered, like, line by line in the, in the budget, but some of these are, like, the free-form questions. So there were a number of people asking about policing. Policing is a huge department in terms of a line item on a budget for every community, and that's regardless of whether you have RCMP or you have a municipal police service, it is probably your largest single department budget. Some folks suggested we switch the RCMP to save money, so I can just tell you right now, it is not cheaper to go the RCMP. It would actually cost us more. The latest data I have is that the average cost per officer for RCMP is about $225,000 with West Hans, they have a different contract, theirs is $256,000 per officer, and that is after they have their 70-30 split. So they're only paying 70% of that, and it's still $225,000. The town of Bridgewater, the net is $166,000, that's cost per officer. We are among the bottom three in terms of costs for municipal police services, and well below the RCMP average. So the cost per officer is lower, and we have 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week service, and most RCMP communities only have 18-hour-a-day policing, and don't have a response time measured in minutes. So it's a level of service difference, but it's also just not cheaper. And it's not, that's not a reflection of the, of the boots-on-the-ground RCMP officers who are doing a lot with the resources that they have, so I don't want that to be seen as a negative reflection on the men and women that are in Lunenburg County, in Queens County, around the province, but just the reflection of, you know, because that question came up a couple of times, and so, just so people are aware, if we moved the RCMP, a level of service would drop, and the costs would, would go up. So that's one. The other with policing was, could we reduce the number of officers and replace them with mental health people, for example? So there is no 24-hour-seven mental health response unit in rural Nova Scotia anywhere, and the only 24/7 response unit that we have is policing. It's not ideal, but when there's a crisis, and you don't know what that crisis is, you're going to send police anyway, and they're, they're the only ones that are available 24/7. We would love to have 24/7 mental health here, especially in Bridgewater, we're, you know, a very busy community, but I don't think we have a comparable town in the province that has that. It is a gap. We would love to have someone on, on our Bridgewater Police Service that has that background, and it is something we look to, but then that becomes a question of, is that a, is that a health question, which is provincial? Is it a policing question? Should it be a policing question? Should those two really mix like that? So it is something to look at, but I just want people to understand that, that we don't have, the, the resources aren't in place. So it's, it's police, or it's fire chiefs, here's police or it's fire going, and it shouldn't be fire going, because if someone's in distress, they need someone who has some additional training and the tools to, to, to help diffuse that situation. Again, not perfectly ideal. In terms of, I had other questions on here, oh yeah, taxes, we, we hear about the tax rate almost every day. So a lot of the emails, I think we all get, start with, Bridgewater has the highest tax rate in the country, we've had a bunch of those, or the highest tax rate in Nova Scotia, so we do not. We're not, we don't have the highest tax rate in Nova Scotia, we don't even have the highest tax rate on the South Shore. We don't even have the highest tax rate in Lunenburg, Queens. So we are actually, when you look at comparable towns, we are below the average tax rate. So when you look at Liverpool, Kentville, Amherst, Yarmouth, Glasgow, Bridgewater, Stellerton, Puro, Digby, Shelburne, Trenton, and Westville, so they either have similar populations, or similar catchment areas, or similar services or amenities. The average tax rate for all of those is $1.92, and we're at $1.85. Now, I, I say that, and I do want to say that I, our tax bills are high, our assessments are high. I'm not suggesting that, you know, people shouldn't think their tax bill is high. I do, tax, the tax bill in the town of Bridgewater is high. Assessments, we can have a very long conversation about assessments, and the assessment cap, and how unfair the assessment cap is, where 30% of the population is carrying 70% of the tax load. So uncapped houses, which is 30%, two years ago, thinking of Joe Feeney gave me this number, he's the Chair of the PBSC Board, two years ago, there were only $4 billion for the properties that were capped. This year, it will be $44 billion. So that is, all those people who bought houses are carrying all that uncapped tax burden, and that is not fair. I, I feel for the province, I don't know how you unwind that, it is not easy. I believe, I'm looking to the Deputy CAO, I believe New Brunswick did it. So it, it can be done, but it's not, it's not as easy as just going, cap is gone, because you have to work with municipalities to do it the right, so, and it's not the current provincial government's fault that the cap is in place, but it needs to be addressed, because that's why you have, I mean, we have people who, one house pays $3,000 in tax, the exact same house next door might pay $8,000 in tax, because someone just bought that house. It also means that a young family starting out, a young person starting out who wants to buy their first home, it is a burden, and it's not fair. Why should they, why should they pay two, three, four times more? So there's a whole bunch of things to go with that, but I just want to start with the foundation of, our tax rate is below the average tax rate of comparable towns. So tax rate stability is something this council has made a priority on, we're not changing the rate this year, if everything goes according to plan, and I think that, that is a testament to the hard work done by staff and council, because there are a number of communities that are now playing catch-up. We have a number of communities that used reserves in past years to artificially keep their tax rate stable, which now they don't have the reserves to do that. I think our Director of Finance would say, using reserves to keep your tax rate artificially low is not a good idea. I think council would agree on that. So I just wanted to, oh yeah, and that average of 1.92 doesn't include, there are four communities that have an additional fee for garbage pickup, which we include in our tax rate. So it's actually more the average, more than $1.92. So I know it doesn't make your bill lower, but I hope it gives people some comfort that, you know, our rate is, you know, not way out to, way out to lunch. This budget sees some significant investments in the recreation, which we've heard is important, not just to people moving to this community, but for the needs of the community. The excitement over a potential new accessible playground, Generations Active Park, adding that for, for next year, for the other side of the river, is very important. So I think that's, that's exciting in this budget. We have a lot of work to do in the next few years. That, that chart of debt service is, that's what keeps me up at night, that, it's just, it's impossible. So it can't, it can't reach 24%. So we have to do a lot of work to keep it below that, well below that. And there's no other town I'd rather be in to get that done, because I know that we can do it, so. I just wanted to kind of add some of that, that context for the big questions that came up in the, in the, in the budget survey. And I'm glad you mentioned EV chargers, because, and I'm glad it came up with the, with the LCLC discussion, because I know it was listed as a EV infrastructure, a low priority on the budget survey. And so it, I think it's, there's two components to it. The town has to look at what it does for its EV infrastructure, for our fleet, which has seen a significant savings in costs. I think the number from policing was $18,000 a year. We save in fuel, and we don't have that many EVs. So we have to look at the EV infrastructure for the, for the town as an organization, and then I really think our role is encouraging places like the mall, and private investment in, in revenue generating EV infrastructure around, around the town, and working with Modal on that probably, too. Those are, those are most of my, my comments on, on the budget. So I don't know if folks have other comments or questions? Deputy Mayor McDonald?
I wish I had a, a lot of questions, but the budget's pretty tight, there's not a, there's not a whole lot of movement that, that can happen, not a ton of choices that can be made, most of it is pretty essential work, with a few, like you said, some, some investment in recreation to add a little fun, a little sparkle in there. I know that we've all been experiencing our personal costs rising, and the town feels the same pressures. I think people often don't think that, you know, our, our fuel, our insurance, all of those costs are going up for the town as well. We're feeling the same pressures, and I'm, I'm really pleased that we've been able to hold the tax rate and the level of service. I really thought this was going to be a year where we were going to have to make some really tough decisions about eliminating some services, or reducing the level of service in, in some areas. And staff did a wonderful job, and we, we held that for, for one more year. This budget is tight, and it's got to get tighter in the coming years, and it's, it's tough to look at a budget like this and see where it's going to get tighter. So I think a few areas of focus have potentially come up that we'll, we'll be working on over the next year, and I think our commitment to, or sorry, I shouldn't speak for everyone, but the commitment, at least from my, my perspective, is that we, we know you're struggling too, we're struggling with these budgets, and we're going to keep working to bring it down, and hopefully keep the, the level of service that you expect, but there are going to be some changes coming in the future.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilor Fugier?
I just have a few comments. Once again, thank you to our CAO and senior staff for their hard work in starting the process early, which, yeah, everybody's organized with starting the strategic plan in early January. That helps guide council with our priorities, so I just want to say, that's well done to Tammy for aligning us with that to help us move forward. It's a vital part of the steps that staff and council take in the budget framework. As our town continues to grow, we must make difficult decisions to ensure that our town's infrastructure, we invest in the wastewater, stormwater management, that we can provide the services to our residents and business community. I'm looking forward to the development of 12A and what opportunities, and hopefully from the sales of land sales, looking at opportunities with revenue, with increasing our tax base for the commercial, will, will help the overall budget for future years, so, yeah, I look forward to, as, as the Deputy Mayor said, we have lots of work to do. These next few budgets with huge investment in our wastewater will, will be difficult and challenging to incur some of those expenses, but at the same time, excited to look at the opportunities that 12A will bring us as well.
Thank you. Councilor Kawa?
I'll say, much like the mayor, I do spend a lot of sleepless nights at budget time, thinking about the budget and the debt. But anyway, for this year, I'm very happy that we maintain the tax rate as is. It's a challenge, but I'm glad, really glad that we, we managed to do that, and despite those challenges, we have managed to focus on commercial growth, creating opportunities for housing, upgrading infrastructure, environmental protection, quality of life, and fiscal responsibility. And I would also like to thank my council colleagues and staff for all the work that went into the budget.
Thank you. Councilor Wainatt?
I think I'm about to echo a lot of what's been said by my colleagues around the table, but this being my first budget, I just sincerely want to thank the CAO and the staff for wonderful presentations and making it a little bit easier for me to understand, and to the mayor as well for answering a lot of my questions that come in during this. I know we're all faced with the same challenges, as has been mentioned, we, you know, rising costs everywhere, and coming into this, I was really hoping to find somewhere where, you know, maybe we could, I hate to use the word cap, but, you know, narrow back some spending, but this is a very extremely tight budget, as the Deputy Mayor has, has already stated. But I, I think, you know, we should all be proud where we are today, the fact that hopefully we're, we're going to approve the freeze in the tax rate, and I am very optimistic we'll do some great things here in the next few years. As Councilor Fugier said, we have exit 12A to look forward to, so I think, I think we'll be able to get through this. I think there'll be a few challenging years, some tough decisions and discussions, but I'm feeling very comfortable. So thank you to everybody. Appreciate your support.
Councilor Kawa, is that your speech? Counselor Conklin, is that your speech?
Thank you, everyone. Now, there's a number of things in the budget that I'm not a fan of, but, you know, I guess in the end, it is the best that our staff can present, and it's the best that, as counselors, we can do for the community. And, yeah, we we have some really, really tough capital projects, infrastructure issues that impacts our ability to spend our tax dollars, our property tax revenues. So, it'd be nice to have more bells and whistles and glitz and glamour to add to what we can provide, but, you know, I'm 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 satisfied with what we have presented and looking forward to next year. And personally, I will be starting sooner than later on trying to, I guess, lobby for some changes on on our budget for this time next year. So, anyway, thank you, Tammy, Kim, and everybody else, and Mayor.
Well, I wasn't prepared to give a speech, but since you mentioned, allow me to pull my note. No. You know, since everybody else said something, now I feel pressured, but I think...
Don't feel pressured, you're going to make this giant motion, I think.
Actually, I was really hoping you'll let me read all the motions. I'm happy to volunteer my services to that. But I think what's really important, and Counselor Conklin said it really well, where, you know, you don't necessarily have to be a fan of everything in the budget. Budgets, at the end of the day, are, they're beacons of compromise, right? And what some people may perceive to be, you know, waste, at the end of the day, others see as really valuable services that truly impact our lives, where we talked about, like, the bus tickets, that like you, I'm maybe not a day-to-day transuser, but there are people who, every day, that is a life-changing service. So, I think it's really important that when we look at these numbers, you know, there are people that that are impacted by these services. And what's important is that instead of people jumping to assumptions, you know, they they have, ask questions and seek clarity. And and to Counselor Wyatt's point, you know, I really appreciate Mayor Mitchell and and our CAO and all of staff answering all of my endless questions and answering, you know, the emails and and questions that do come in. And I think what's important to remember at the end of the day for all of us and and residents, at the end of the day, council and staff, we are only humans, waking up every day, trying to make our town an incredible place to live, and we all work very hard to do that. So, I appreciate everyone. Thank all of you for all of your time and effort to this amazing town.
Thank you.
Can I just, because you kind of turned it around there a little bit, but there was a lot of doom and gloom there, and I just want to, I don't want to close out a a really big effort on the part of council and and staff on a negative note, because we are Bridgewater, and we are going to, you know, we we always pull together some pretty incredible things, and we've got an incredible community, and it will be great, and we will be behind the scenes working hard to make sure it continues to be as great as it always has been.
I appreciate it.
Yes, huge thank you to staff and council for patience and, like, diligence and preparing. One of the things I noticed, my colleagues and other municipalities aren't going to be a fan of me saying this, but our documentation online for the budget is so detailed. Some municipalities, who shall remain nameless, literally have a photocopy. You can see the three holes and, like, where the photocopier did the copying of the paper, and it's five pages for a 25, $30 million budget. It is just a financial statement, and that would probably be easier for us to just show the public, just, ah, a lot of money in, a lot of money out, please don't ask any questions. But that is not how we do it, it's not how we've done it. I think Kim would quit if we made her try to hide things. Like, we are so transparent. These numbers aren't always pleasant to look at, right? She probably didn't have to show the chart for all the years, because it's not great, but it's important for us as a council. It's important, was important for the last council and the council before that, and I'm hoping it will be important for the next council, that we are transparent, good news or bad. And so, I'm really just so privileged to be sitting around this table with this group of people, with this staff team that are here tonight and who are not here tonight. So, thank you for that. And and before we get to the motions, I just want to remind people that we do all this with eight cents of every tax dollar. Municipalities across the country only receive, for every dollar you spend on taxes, municipalities get eight cents, yet we provide over 60% of the infrastructure and a huge majority of the services you use daily. If federal government stopped working, it might take you a week to find out. If the provincial government stopped working, you might find out by the end of the day, but you will find out by the end of that hour if municipal services have stopped. Means your traffic lights aren't working properly, your water's not running, your toilet's not flushing, there's no police, there's no fire, there's no garbage pickup. Those things that you interact with every day, we have to do that with eight cents of every tax dollar. So, I know, again, I know people pay a lot in property tax, but in the, think of all the other taxes you pay when 30, 40, 50% of your paycheck goes somewhere, and we still take some property tax and then remit it to other orders of government. So, all the property tax we take in, we don't keep. And so, I think it's just a testament to this, what staff and council are able to do with what is literally the smallest part of everyone's tax dollar. And we stretch that out and stretch that out and stretch that out, and that's not just Bridgewater, that's every municipality across the country. Towns are a little more handicapped by the fact that you now have to add that we have to pay for our roads, and rural communities don't have to pay for most of the roads, things like that, but they still have to deal with, you know, a little bit less than 10 cents of every tax dollar. So, I just, I do want to just call that out, because it is, it is quite something. Imagine what we could do if we had more taxation power, that we didn't have to go property tax, that if, I wasn't going to talk all night, but, that's why I want to be mayor, so I can talk all night. A friend of mine, the former mayor of Toronto, described it well as, every piece of economic activity that a municipality creates is a cost center for that municipality, but a revenue center for provincial and federal governments. If a new business comes, which is great, yes, we get property tax, but we have to provide the infrastructure to that business, multiple layers of infrastructure. But if we create an environment where they go from 50 employees to 200 employees, the payroll tax, all the additional sales tax that those employees spend, all go to other levels of government and do not go to municipalities. And that's not just, again, not just Bridgewater, it's whether it's at exit 12 or exit 12A. So, imagine what we could do if we sat down with the other orders of government and said, you know what, if there's a little piece, right, HST or or, you know, part of the payroll tax system, where we could start to charge property tax in a different way, remove the cap and flat rate tax, things like that. We've talked about this, Councilor, at length. If we could be more creative, we could ease the tax burden at the municipal level while not really impacting services at the federal and provincial level. I believe that. So, if you want to start on that, Counselor Conklin, we can work on that one together. That'd be right in your wheelhouse.
Could I make a comment?
Yeah.
Just a question. Does our Director of Finance own a three-hole punch?
No.
Not home, but not here on my doorstep.
Anyway, that's the end of my, end of my rant, but I just, yeah, anyway. Counselor Newell, do you wish to make the first motion?
If 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 council should have me do it, certainly. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater must go to say this as cheery as possible, to make sure we're we're positive about these big numbers. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, one, approve the 2025 and 2026 capital budget in the amount of $16,932 and, oh, sorry, $16,932, $250, and with the funding, including the reserve transfers as presented in document number 25-034D. Two, approve the 2025, 2026 operating budget in the amount of $33,977,033, with revenue and expenditures totaling $33,977,033, including the reserve transfers as presented in document number 25-034D. Three, set the 2025, 2026 commercial tax rate at $4.07 per $100 of assessment. Four, set the 2025, 2026 residential tax rate at $1.85 per $100 of assessment. And five, set the special purpose tax for commercial and residential for the payment of debenture principal and interest for the Lunenburg County multipurpose center at 6 cents per $100 of assessment.
Thank you. Seconded by Deputy Mayor McDonald for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Sewer charges, Counselor Fugier?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater set the 2025, 2026 annual sewer charges for properties in the town of Bridgewater connected to the public sewer of the town as follows. Number one, residential and land lease communities for $565 for one dwelling unit plus $565 for each additional unit, each additional dwelling unit. Two, hotels, motels, base charge of $1,220 plus $110 for each guest unit. Three, hospitals, base charge of $21,850 plus $115 for each patient bed. Four, long-term care facility base charge of $565 plus $377 per patient bed. Five, large industrial of $54,000. Six, educational car wash, ancillary car wash, and large grocery at $4,800. Seven, other commercial shopping centers, institution, and industrial users, for first user, is $1,220 plus $1,220 for each additional unit. And that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater set the 2025, 26 annual sewer charges for properties with the municipality of the District of Lunenburg connected to the sewage collection system in Headville as follows. Resident and land lease communities at a per-unit charge of $774, and commercial shopping centers, institutional and industrial users, per-unit charge of $1,658.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Conklin for the discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, and our last motion for tax bills, Counselor Newell? Thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, in accordance with Policy 92A, shall generate the interim tax bills for fiscal 2025, 26, with the current year's taxable assessment and the 2025, 26 tax and sewer rates as approved by council. I assume that the date's today, March, what are you, March 31st, 2025? The interim tax bill shall be due on February Friday, May 30th, 2025, my apologies. B, that the final tax bill for fiscal 2025, 26 shall become due on Monday, September 29th, 2025. And C, that the interest for, interest on overdue accounts be set at 12% per annum, charged out 1% per month.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Wyatt for the discussion on that. Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. And today is year end, so, well done on the timing. Tomorrow, we start again.
It's a new year.
All right, thank you so much. Again, thank you to staff and council and to all the folks that have interacted with us and emailed and messaged and stuff like that. Yeah, we'll see you at the next meeting. Can I have a motion adjourned, please? Counselor Newell, seconded by Counselor Fugier. We are adjourned.